Good afternoon. I'd like to call the September 20, 2011 City Council Meeting to order. Will you please rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Francisco Hachkiss, Houghs, Rouse, Self, White, Mayor Schneider. Item One, Proclamation declaring September 25 to October 1, 2011 as Sea Otter Awareness Week.
Come on up. Great. Maritime Museum, correct? Or from the Sea Center? That's right. I knew that. Great. Whereas the sea otter is a symbol of wilderness, an integral part of California's natural ecosystem, and serves as an indicator for the overall health of California's nearshore marine ecosystem, and a growing awareness of the benefits of maintaining the health of nearshore marine ecosystem has raised public interest in the sea otter. Disease from a variety of sources, including land-based biological pathogens, account for approximately forty percent of the mortality for California sea otters in a given year. And the health of a sea otter, nearshore ecosystem health and human health are inextricably linked to the land-sea connection whereby what we do on land has impact on our oceans. The survival of the sea otter in California remains dependent upon continued public support and increased understanding of the essential role sea otters play in nature. So therefore, I, Helene Schneider, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Santa Barbara, do hereby proclaim September 25 through October 1, 2011, a Sea Otter Awareness Week in Santa Barbara, and encourage citizens to be mindful of the sea otters and their great importance to our future. And they're really cute, too. Thank you very much for being here. If you'd like to say a few words, you're welcome to.
Well, the Sea Center greatly appreciates the city council's support in ocean conservation, and sea otters definitely play an important role in the health of our ocean ecosystem. So thank you very much. Thanks.
Letter of recognition in honor of Rental Housing Mediation Task Force Board Member, Barbara Smith Sherrill.
Come on up, Barbara. Good to see you. The purpose of the Rental Housing Mediation Task Force is to provide neutral, confidential, and compassionate mediation services for rental owners and residents when conflict arises, welcoming all people of all backgrounds. And the Rental Housing Mediation Task Force, by its efforts to keep cases out of the courts, keep people off the streets, and in safe and secure housing, the other offices and branches of government from having to attend to these crises. Barbara Smith Sherrill has served on the Rental Housing Mediation Task Force from June 2004 to June 2011, served in all officer positions, secretary, vice chair, and two terms of chair, creating a forum for open, honest, and civil discourse and training sessions, assisted in outreach and funding presentations, participated in many mediations, serving all with patience, maintaining an impartial air, holding true to the law and spirit of mediations, and successfully bringing to a just conclusion the will and desires of the participants, one and all. So therefore, I, Helene Schneider, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Santa Barbara, California, do hereby offer gratitude and appreciation to Barbara Smith Sherrill for serving the community through the Santa Barbara Rental Housing Mediation Task Force, bringing relief, comfort, and peace of mind to our residents. Thank you for all your work on this amazing task force. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Glad to see you. Well, this is a great honor for me to receive this from Madam Mayor. I really appreciate it. And I feel it's not just for me, but it's for all the members of the task force who do their duty so well and give their hours of spare time to work for the city. So it's been a great privilege to serve in these capacities. I've forgotten half of them. But thank you very much, council members and Madam Mayor.
Thank you. You've been a great leader in that task force very much. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are not, Madam Mayor.
Okay. A public comment. We have two minutes here at the podium. Start with Reverend Paul Vid. We'll be followed by Ruben Barajas.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, City Council people. You've all made a big difference for us all. Thank you. The greatest day of my life was the day I became an American citizen, not an American citizen, but a United States citizen. And I'm very, very proud of my nation. I will say, I'm here today to request that we put aside one month in honor of all the Italians that built this town. All the walls, all the buildings that are so important were built by Italians. Over 2,000 of them came over and worked on this project back in the late 1800s. And as you can see here, even the courthouse, everything was built by Italian, the Italian masons. And I ask that we honor and give thanks to a nation that gave so much to our country, and we have so much to be proud of. Please consider it. It's very, very important. Now, this coming year, we will have an Italian flag flying, just like we have the Mexican flag, and of course, the Spanish flag, and our American flag, which is the most important. And I'm taking care of that and paying for the initial price of the cost. And I think maybe for three days out of the year, we will see an Italian flag downtown. But there was a time an eighth of our town was all Italian. So viva America per sempre con l'obbligazione di Dio, grazie a tutto. Questo è un regalo per voi altri. A gift for you all. Have a great, great day.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Ruben Barajas will be followed by Vaughn Parker.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Ruben Barajas. In regards to a letter that was sent to the mayor and City Council and Public Works concerning Canejo Road area, road repair and drainage, I recently made a call to Rick Fulmer, which is the streets manager for the city, to repair a portion of even place between 11 and 17 even place so that my family could have access to our home. I was told that they were not going to do anything, any kind of repair there. This is just another added disaster to what we're dealing with right now, to my family not having access to our home. I'm not asking to repair the whole street, just that portion so that we can get up and down. I was told that engineering was looking at this situation, and meanwhile, this repair can be done. So that we, especially with the rains and everything coming up pretty soon, it's going to be a lot more difficult. I've got some estimates from companies that said they can do it, you know, they do the work. So it's not a matter of can't do it, they won't do it. I've got three estimates from reputable paving companies. So it's not just any standby people that can do this kind of work. This is not only extremely important for the access, but also for the drainage of the area. You can do it. It can be done. After all, we're Santa Barbara. I believe we help each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Vaughn Parker, was there a question, Mr. Hachkiss?
Yes, please. Excuse me, sir. Could I ask?
If you can come back up.
Thank you. This is up in the area where there's earth movement, continued earth movement, correct?
There is. And there's been some work done on Canejo Road itself where the movement's been. They have, the city has repaired that portion of it, but they haven't repaired my street.
Right. And at least to understand, I understand that the city sort of said, it's still moving. If we repair something now, it could be a wreck in a day or a week.
It's still in the same slide plane as Canejo Road is. I mean, it's, you know, it's a road, but they can repair it. I mean, it's going to be, it's not a fix-all forever, you know? It's going to be an as-needed basis, you know?
How close can you get right now with your, when you drive?
Well, to the top of the street, and I have to walk, you know, carry our groceries and...
How far is that?
Maybe 200 feet, so.
All right.
From the street to our address.
All right. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
All right. Thank you.
Vaughn Parker will be followed by Jim Worthing.
My name is Vaughn Parker. I live at 921 Mission Ridge Road, which is right next to the City Number 7 Fire Station. I've lived there for 51 years and have always considered myself and the fire department to be good neighbors. A couple of months ago, at the request of the fire department, for fire suppression purposes, most of the vegetation was removed between my house and the fire station. Following that, the fire chief had a survey done to determine the exact location of the property line, which I knew about where it was, but it's now definitely, it's approximately six feet from my house. I was told that he plans to install a six-foot redwood fence on the property line. This fence will be right outside my bedroom window. My house is up on a foundation, so that, you know, it will block my view. I don't want a fence just outside my bedroom window. It's not appropriate for this rural A1-zoned area, and not my idea of being good neighbors. I contacted the mayor's office and sent an email address to the council. I have here a copy of the message that I sent in case it didn't get to you all. A few days ago, again, I contacted the mayor's office, and I was told that now the plan is for a chain-link fence. I have twice been told by the mayor's office that someone would contact me. So far, this has not happened. This is a terrible waste of taxpayers' money. I'm here to request that this unnecessary expenditure for an unnecessary fence be eliminated, and I request any help that you all can give me. Thank you very much for your help. I have a copy here of the letter that I sent, and also a copy of my notes of what I just read. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jim Worthing will be followed by Pat Love.
Madam Mayor and City Council, my bona fides in government and politics speak for themselves. The buck stops there with you. You have a city that's being demeaned in the press, maybe rightly so. You have a police department that every officer is being lowered in the image in the public by inaction on the part of you, the city administrator, I know, is the one who has to take action with his city police department. You need to give direction, either by resolution or by direction, to every city administrator that if there's reasonable allegations of malfeasance or criminality, the person, no matter what department, city attorney, city administrator, fire, police, is immediately suspended during the investigation. It looks so terrible that you have a police officer that the allegations of forgery that look very real to anyone who's looked at it, the allegations of forgery stand, and she's out on patrol harassing people, anecdotal, training people, anecdotal, at the same time when she may have, in a year, be imprisoned. I think, and I'd be glad for her to sue me, I've studied this very closely, been in the courtroom many times, I've looked at the paperwork. You need to do something because your city administrator is not, the police chief is not, and I'll leave you with the last most ridiculous situation, and one of you told me, oh, we discovered it internally. When the people of the city of Santa Barbara find out that an employee has stolen 100,000? I've heard 1,200,000. Who was watching the store? Who was checking? Now, I was told, we discovered it. Well, most businesses, and you see all the time investors, most businesses catch it in the first 10,000, not after a million.
Wow! We need to listen.
Pat Love, please sit down. Please sit down. Thank you. Pat Love will be followed by Jeff Alexander, and then I, the person, will be the final speaker.
Seven days ago, I gave a speech about parking tickets, and I neglected to mention that it was about street cleaning. But on another note, now I'd like to talk about panhandling, homelessness, and bigotry. Santa Barbara is one town that has a major bigotry problem. I was in Ortega Park and sitting down on the grass, and I believe I looked homeless, and there was a couple kids there, maybe 10 to 12 years of age, and apparently, one of them threw an orange plastic highway cone at me, and it hit me, and I turned around, and I saw both of them running away. And one day, I was flying my sign, and afterward, I rode away on my bicycle, and one of the brakes didn't work, and I took the bicycle to the shop, and the guy who was working there, he said, it looks like this brake cable has been cut. The government is trying to appease the small-minded, uptight, prudish, hate-mongering, hostile, heartless, stiff-neck, squawking bigots. And a lot of the tourists are not bigots, and why should they have to put up with all that negative energy? I spoke with one of the supervisors at Trader Joe's de la Vina, and he said that there's people in that area who are uppity, and they don't want to see the panhandling. But he also said that they get more complaints from, about the activists than they do about the panhandling. And if Santa Monica is half as draconian as Michael Self has indicated, then you talk about begging, that town is begging for a lawsuit.
Okay. Jeff Alexander.
Good afternoon, members of the council, and Mayor Schneider. My name is Jeff Alexander. I'm the Santa Barbara County Film Commissioner, and I'm here today to give you a brief update on new developments in film production here in the city of Santa Barbara. First, I want you to know that Santa Barbara continues to be a viable production destination and is slowly but steadily climbing its way back after a low point in 2008. From 2008 through July of this year, production spending has actually increased from about $730,000 to 1.8 million, more than doubling over the past three years. Again, it's slow but steady, and that's always great to see. As well, I'm glad to be able to share the positive impacts of production on the city are greater than previously thought. The Film Commission had in the past used a 10% number of total production spending to arrive at the amount spent on location for lodgings. Obviously, this is what most people are interested in here, is how much are people spending when they're in town? Now, while this may be true of other locations, new information, which has been shared with me by local hoteliers, shows actually a much higher amount of money being spent locally. While the direct spend in city permits looks like around $200,000 spent on local lodgings, the reports from the hoteliers are actually showing a minimum of about $520,000 being spent on local lodgings. And this translates to TOT directly into the city coffers of about $62,000. I'm actually being pretty conservative on that number. Now, the reason for this discrepancy, you wonder why, is that actually many productions base their operation here in the city in terms of where they stay, but they may shoot in outside jurisdictions, which is where they pull permits. So we weren't actually seeing that activity. And yet, during that time, they're staying here, and they're spending their money on hotels and restaurants, all that great stuff. So I'm glad to tell you, we're seeing more money than we thought. The city continues to benefit not only from the direct spending, but also from the beneficial PR. We see a lot of lifestyle travel and culinary shows coming through Santa Barbara, which show off our incredible city, beaches, activities, restaurants, et cetera. And I'll skip the wonderful reality stuff that we all like to hear about. Finally, I do want you to know that we've been able to work with the Parks and Rec Department to come up with some permitting changes. They're very positive in terms of putting us in front of this business, and also introducing an economic reporting aspect to your permitting, which did not exist previously. So we're able to track more specifically the benefit to the city of this production. So I want to say thank you to your Parks and Rec personnel.
Thank you. If you could probably send us some of that, some of the statistics, that was a lot in a couple minutes, so that would be appreciated.
I'm more than happy to give you a quick brief. Last thing I want you to know, we've got a tour of location scouts coming in here to Santa Barbara City this week, eight people looking for locations to shoot, so I wanted you to know about that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I, the person.
I am I, the person. When joined by others, I becomes we, the people. And when we, the people, embrace an idea whose time has come, there is nothing more powerful in human form. So I'd like to wish you an International Peace Day, and I hope that you know there's an uprising in New York, and that the progressives will be running a slate in the primaries to have a dialogue with Barack Obama. You are the head of the body politic. You are a collective brain. You have the eyes to envision the future. You have the ears to listen to your constituents. You have a nose to smell out corruption, but you have only one voice. Do you understand that if you turn a blind eye to our suffering, that if you are deaf to our outrage, you are derelict in your duties? Do you understand? Okay, well, one of your members, and you will have to correct him, he is pretending he's deaf. None of you have responded. If you are a responsive government, and I've already said you're the head of the body politic, do you understand that when you are unresponsive, that when the collective brain becomes brain-dead, do you know what a coup d'etat means? Do you know what a coup d'etat means? Hello, I'm talking to you. If you cannot tell me that you understand my words, then I can turn around to talk to the people. And that's what a revolution is. A revolution is...
Need to wind up, please.
Well, actually, I am I, the person. There's another speaker slip for I, the person. Is there another person who will claim they are I, the person?
Ms. Smith, your time is up. Thank you very much.
I get two more minutes. Yes, you must.
I don't have a speaker slip from you. You could have put that in before her, before she came in.
Yes, I turned it in. I turned it in.
You turned in two for yourself.
No, I didn't.
Yes, I have the other one right here. It's the same person, so...
No, it is not.
Your time is up, Ms. Smith.
It is spelled differently. I will not stand down!
Ms. Smith, your time is up.
I will not stand down. He has given me his time.
Well, you're already at extra time. Time is up, Ms. Smith.
I will not stand down.
Ms. Smith, I'm going to turn off the mic in just a minute, and if you don't stand away from the microphone.
Do you understand what a coup d'etat is?
Ms. Smith, you need to step away from the podium. Please step away from the podium.
I have been given time by that man. Will you please stand up here?
I give time, if people want to waive it at the beginning of the public comment period, that did not happen, your time is up. Thank you very much.
Wait till next week, please. Arrange it next week. Let him give you your time next week. You're done for today, okay? Please. That's me very nicely.
I'm turning off the mic, Ms. Smith. I'll be adjourning this, I'll be, thank you, Ms. Smith. Okay, that concludes public comment. Move on to the consent calendar. I believe there is an item to read.
Item Six, Request for a Resolution Supporting the 2011 Santa Barbara International Marathon, recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara requesting the State of California Department of Transportation to permit the temporary closure of portions of State Highway 225 on November 12, 2011.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. Is there anyone who needs to pull an item off the consent calendar, or is there a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. There was no ordinance or finance committee meeting, so we're on to item number 13.
Capital Improvement Project's Annual Report for Fiscal Year 2011.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Pat Kelly, the Assistant Public Works Director, City Engineer, and I'm here today to give you a snapshot of the city's capital program, which involves many city funds and the involvement of many city departments. The city's quite unique in the variety and wide range of funds and availability of capital. I'll summarize completed projects, construction in progress, and design status. The focus will be on work completed in the second half of the fiscal year. I'd like to point out a couple items that are in the Council General Report, namely Attachment 3 and Attachment 4. Attachment 3 highlights the total costs of the 48 projects in design, which I'll be talking a little bit about later. For example, there's six redevelopment agency projects valued at over $11 million, which includes such projects as the De La Guerra Plaza project. And this report focuses on the highlights, not the details of those such projects. Attachment 4 is the highlight of the 25 projects that we have in construction, which value over $35 million. So... For the third and fourth quarter of the last fiscal year, 12 projects were completed that had notices of completion filed. The total value of project cost was over $15 million. The third quarter was over, was close to $8 million, and the fourth quarter, just over $7.5 million, including the $10.5 million or so completed in the first two quarters. That's over $26 million for last fiscal year. Here's a map showing the location of the many projects throughout the town. As you can see, just in general, there's a lot of different colors up there, and a lot of different symbols, and they're spread throughout the town. Some examples would be the Lisos Access Ramps and the Stimulus or Ara Catch Base and Repair Project, which were distributed throughout the city. Couple focus projects would be the Correo Rec Center, the rehabilitation of the downtown facility there. Some work out at the airport, the Loma Alta sidewalks, Brinkerhoff sidewalk lighting, and the west downtown pedestrian improvements. Here's talk about some of the projects completed in the first quarter at over $10.5 million. The details of this, of these projects were presented about six months ago in the semi-annual report. So here's a little bit more interesting stuff. Here's some pictures of before and after of some of the, at least this one facility at parking lot off Chapala. And this project was last phase of the Parking Division's system-wide replacement of all the parking revenue control equipment. The work included improving entrances, improving the lot entrances to protect revenue control equipment from larger trucks. If you don't watch it on a big turn, sometimes the front bumper will knock the equipment. Also, upgrades included American Disabilities Act standards, improving passive travel, new landscaping, and installing fiber optic communication links. Here's kind of one of the jewels of the city, the Correo Rec Center Rehabilitation. And this is renovation of a 1913 facility, major improvements, improved accessibility and seismic safety, funded by the Redevelopment Agency. Many of the architectural elements were restored, and you can see some of the landscaping in the front was completed. A ribbon cutting was held on September 1 to celebrate this completion, and it was coordinated with the Downtown Organization's first Thursday event. Here's some, just in a sense, routine infrastructure a lot of us don't see, even though it's close to $1.4 million. This was a grading of and landscaping of a seven-acre basin in the Galuta Slough as part of a mitigation project associated with the airfield safety projects, in particular, the runway relocation. And this area was lowered by two feet, and some of the features allow, including storm flows and tidal flows, go into the newly created basin. Here's one intersection of the west downtown pedestrian improvement, which provided pedestrian-oriented lighting and sidewalk replacement, and new street trees, and some drought-tolerant landscaping along both Annapamoo and Ortega between Chapala and the 101 Freeway, the intent being to provide improvement of pedestrian corridors between the downtown and the west side neighborhoods. Moving on into construction, here again, we're just hitting the highlights. It's, don't have the time to go through the, all the projects. In particular, we have 25 projects in progress at this time, valued over $35 million. We're featuring four here. One of the nicest ones is represented by this photo of the newly opened airport t-... One of the nicest ones is represented by this photo of the newly opened airport terminal, which opened in August and is now fully operational. The, moving on with the opening of this terminal is now the restoration of the historical, historic terminal, which will be then moved over to the side of this, and that work is scheduled to be completed next spring. Here's one of the nicer features, or one of the new features of the new terminal, which is a jet bridge, and it provides you can see improved accessibility, and then also being in Santa Barbara, the views of the ocean and the mountains, open views from the jet The, this is an interesting project that's in progress right now, and this is, the Creeks Division was able to get a fish and game grant for a fish passage in the old Caltrans, what's called the Old Caltrans Concrete Channel. Construction has started, and the construction could be completed as early as this season or probably more than likely anticipating the timing of rains probably next, next year. It consists of removing a part of the existing channel bottom to construct a small channel, which allows pools that will allow fish passage to this area, which anticipated they wouldn't, they are not able to do at this time. Because the new channel is below the current bottom, the passage feature will not, is not expected to affect the level of the water during storm runoffs. It's hard to get a good action photo of the replacement of a treatment system up at the ozone treatment, up at the cater treatment plant, but as you can see from the value of this, $14 million, it's a significant project. And what it is, it's replacing the existing chlorination system of disinfection with an ozone disinfection system. And hopefully, once it's all complete, it's anticipated that the city's water will taste even better. Here's a project down at the waterfront, which reflects many of the wide variety of funds within the city and the city's capital program. This is Phase Two of Marina One Replacement, replacement of fingers O and P. This was actually completed last May, and work has begun on Phase Three, which will be the replacement of finger N. All the projects are completed, are anticipated to be completed in June of 2013. And again, it's very difficult to get an action photo of design in progress, so I just have just a quick summary of that. Forty-eight projects and a value of over $111 million. Much of the work is identified in the city's six-year CIP Capital Improvement Program Report, which we do just about every two years. The projects rely on city funds, but you can see by the value of this also, much of it is from anticipated funding from grants, in particular, our, our bridge projects. Some highlights that are not in this, in this presentation, but are highlighted in the CAR, in the Council of Gen Report, includes Sycamore Creek improvements, Correo sidewalk infill, some headworks replacement down at the El Estero Treatment Plant, and the Ortega groundwater rehabilitation, which will improve the reliability of our water system. So, with that, I have a five-minute video that the CD TV helped prepare for us, and, The sound is here in a minute. It's down bottom right. There you go. Sorry, guys.
The bridge has been refurbished and widened.
The Haley de La Vina Bridge Project actually started back in 2002, 2003, when Caltrans finished up a report that showed that the bridge was structurally deficient. And so, we got work on design on that, and we were fortunate to be able to have federal matching funds from the Highway Bridge Replacement and Reconstruction Program, which will pay for 88.5% of the project, so that the matching funds, 11.5% would come from city funds, kind of leveraging our funds to get the bridge replaced. And Haley was the first bridge of up to nine coming here in the future, replacing these bridges. They're all kind of reaching the end of their life and at various, various states of disrepair.
The project fits into an even larger Mission Creek Flood Control Project. As part of that larger project, other improvements will be made throughout the creek, such as the re-establishment of native plants.
With all the bridge projects that we're doing in, along Mission Creek, there's always a restoration portion, and with this project and future projects, there'll be restoration areas to try and re-establish native plants and habitat for creek aquatic life, and that's always been the mission of these bridge projects, is to try to bring back that, that life that did exist before all the houses were built right up on, on the banks of the creek.
In order to enhance the neighborhood charm and add to the uniqueness of the bridge, local art groups were included in the development.
Some of the, I think, more interesting elements that could be done, as we did work with the arts community, and there's a, a lot of tile work that was done by local children that kind of accent the bridge. I think there's an arts and crafts look to the bridge that we were able to come together with HLC and, and come up with a very unique design that kind of speaks to this historic neighborhood.
Another important phase of the bridge project is the preservation and remodel of a corner house that's part of the area's historical heritage.
Part of the neighborhood required that we did purchase and remove one house, and, but we were able to save, there was quite a few others that, you know, were on the, on the verge, and one of them was a historical structure, which we were able to purchase, and we're currently restoring and hope to have that done in September. And the city will probably turn around and just sell that house on the open market.
The new bridge is a symbol of hope that will help rejuvenate the area, creating a new and safe landmark to be cherished for the next 100 years.
I think one of the most significant things after the bridge was done was the response from the community. I think the, the investment in this part of the neighborhood that probably, it's been a while since the city's done any significant improvements here, has really brought a lot of pride to the neighborhood. There's, you know, as we mentioned, there's the art elements that were done, the tile work, and there was actually even a stamp concrete that goes through, shows, designates the edges of the bridge that kind of just make it unique and different. And a lot of the responses I'm getting is just the pride, the general pride, someone's made an investment in this neighborhood. And it is the first of upcoming events. We have another one planned to, to improve the lighting for the whole, this whole lower west downtown area. And so, I think that continued investment will really bring people to have some, take real pride in their neighborhood.
Currently, the Ortega Street Bridge over Mission is under construction. To follow the progress of construction, go to sanabarbarca.gov/OrtegaBridge.
Nicely done, thank you.
Yes, CD TV strikes again. They do an excellent job. In particular, on the closing is that Ortega Bridge is making significant progress, and the contractor is telling us he plans to be done by December. The schedule says February, so we'll take the middle, say January, and then that's when the street should be open again.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions? I don't see any public comment speakers. Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Kelly, on the Correo sidewalk infill, I note it says, "Construction of new sidewalk, curb, and gutter access ramps, planted parkways, street, street trees, et cetera." No bulbouts, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. House?
I don't know why, but I have to say, I like bulbouts. Excuse me, you guys. Like, I was at Cottage Hospital the other day and, over here, just early today, and I was walking around going, "This is so great. It just celebrates the neighborhood, makes it sweet." I couldn't help it, I have to say that. Any case, question though for Mr. Kelly, and you know, every time we have these capital improvement reports, one of the things that I just find so fascinating is the, the way that we are able to use local funds to match tremendous amounts of funds that have been collected at the state or federal level that are available for our communities, and then we benefit by that greatly. And when you mention the bridge, bridges that 88-point something percent are, are from federal funds, we have to provide that 11% gap ourselves. And it seems like a real leverage, leveraging opportunity and a true magnification of our local resource. And one of the things that I, would like us to have, and it may actually be in here, and I'm just overlooking it, but would be at some point, kind of a summary of what, what the, when we have these big $111 million and these 48 million and these big numbers, what, what portion of that really are locally generated funds, and what portion of that has been leveraged through the staff's really skillful negotiation through that kind of, that kind of world, and getting us in on time, too, for, for being able to accomplish these. So, I don't know if you have any information with you today. If you don't, perhaps at another time, but it would be very interesting to know how we've been able to leverage the, our local funds.
Mayor and council member Grant, thank you for the question, because indeed, I do have some information for you. I appreciate-
You're the man.
-questions, I have answers to. In fact, it is an item or request from the DIAS during the Public Works budget presentation, and we have the information for 2011, and we're giving it-
Fiscal year 2011?
Fiscal year 2011, yes. And of the $25 million last fiscal year, 17 million of it was grants through a wide variety of grants, and then 22% of that was loans, which is a very important element also of our ability to, in a sense, leverage our capital improvement program. Loans are very big in the Water Resources Department for Cater and El Estero, and also Waterfront's been very successful in getting loans for its Marina work. And as far as grants go, it's, you know, the bridges are great, but there's also been some great loans, rather, grants in particular, out at the airport and through creeks. Both those departments have been very successful in getting grants. So, I hope to have the, the prior years in the near future, and send that through the City Administrator's Office to council as per the request at our budget, at the departmental budget presentation.
Yeah, thank you so much for having me. And I think, I mean, a point can be made, it's not free money. I mean, it was money that came from the public in the first place, you know, for these things. On the other hand, if we don't step up and get in there on time with, with requests that really are, that qualify for those kinds of funds, that money just gets left on the table and goes to other jurisdictions. So, for us to be able to claim it and be able to use it here on projects that we find that are important to us, I mean, I'm just really grateful to you and your staff for, for the work that you do on behalf of the public. Thank you very much.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Kelly, kind of a hot-button topic right now as far as RDA projects go. Can you break out for me on the, both the design in progress and the project category, De La Guerra Plaza, any numbers? Have you got that available?
I have to go to another report.
You are the man today.
For the Madam Mayor and Councilmember Rouse, I mean, I find the Redevelopment Agency, and I wonder if Paul could, I have to look, Paul may have him bright in his memory.
Madam Mayor and council members, I don't have the dollar amounts. I do know the status of it. Back in May, the City Council looked at the entire RDA capital budget and laid out a capital program for the remaining years of the agency and, and maintained De La Guerra Plaza as a project at that point. We came to a status report to the full council just in the last two months, specifically on De La Guerra Plaza, and gave you a status report on that. And we are following up on the direction that came out of that meeting. We're at the Planning Commission this Thursday with the concept review, and council essentially initiated the environmental impact report status of the project. And so, we'll be doing environmental review and, and the other kind of planning work and checking in with the Historic Landmarks Commission over the next year, and then it'll be coming back to the City Council to determine whether you want to move forward with the implementation of it or not.
I know there's a presentation, I believe tomorrow morning, to the Downtown Organization, GRC, so I was hoping to look reasonably informed, so, but thank you.
I did find in our database that the Plaza De La Guerra improvements are estimated as far as our total project costs, as far as looking at it, is like, looks like $2.5 million, I believe, is the total project cost, at least on how we're looking at it. I don't know exactly what's in the RDA budget. And in the same vein, for the Library Plaza, I have 1.5. The exact amount in the RDA budget, I can't speak to right at this time.
And those are, those are inclusive design costs, is that correct?
Yes, total project cost.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Great, it's always good to get an update. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Okay, any council member committee assignment reports? All right, I think we had an appeal that was settled, which is why this meeting's so short today, which is good. Mr. House, did you have something?
Yeah, just real briefly, I'm the liaison to the Conference and Visitors Bureau and the Film Commission, and I go to their board meetings each month. And of course, we've had some relatively good news for the transient occupancy tax, and they're beginning to, they've got their first reports in on the, how the new T-Bid, the Business Improvement District for Tourism, is, is working, and they're very much on track with the expected revenues from that. They're using, they're, they've organized themselves to be able to use it well, but also to keep track of how those funds are coming in, how they're being used, so there's a real clear distinction, even though in some places they get melded together with city funds. In any case, a couple of things to report. One of them is that the, they've, they've decided to all take Brown Act classes, because now that's, they're going to have to be, for at least the one portion of their management, they have to, their Brown Act organization right now are overseen by that. And so, they've decided to apply that throughout the entire organization. So, for all their meetings, they're all going to be abiding by the same open meeting laws that we do here at the City Council. The other thing that was interesting was that we've had a, kind of a big increase in international tourism in our area, and they're beginning to really track that. And so, they're, they're marketing outside of the US, and they're beginning to see that, that benefit. So, out of that last meeting, I've talked with Kathy Janega Dykes and their chair and the whole committee, and we've decided to put together a, kind of an ad hoc committee of some sort to begin to work with design review boards and talk about international siding, signage in our community. Things, Randy, you know I've talked about that at the Downtown Organization, so we're going to be looking at who should be involved in that, and just to begin to look and see if we couldn't have something that would be consistent throughout the whole community that would really welcome our international visitors and help them know where to go and where their opportunities. So, just something new that came out of that last meeting that I thought you should know about.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I have some sad news to report. Gerardo Ricardo was, was one of the parent representatives on the Task Force on Youth Games, and he was on the Leadership Council, and he died unexpectedly last September 15th. We got the message from Father Raphael. And there'll be a rosary tomorrow, the 21st, at 7:00, and a funeral on Thursday, September 22nd. He was certainly a vital member of our Leadership Council, connecting services to youth and parents, so I'd like to take this opportunity to adjourn in his honor today. So, with that, we'll adjourn to Monday, September 26, 2011, at 1:30 PM at 21 North Miltis Street, which is the site of an appeal for next week's agenda. Thank you.